In a rich neighborhood in Virginia where arrests were made after a school board meeting on critical race theory, which wasn't even a school board meeting on critical race theory, by the way. So nice framing from Fox News. Like, it was literally an end of the year school board meeting. Like, just a regular end of the year school board meeting. And they, uh, they turned this into bedlam.
... school board meeting on transgender policy and critical race theory. It turned physical tonight in Loudoun County, Virginia, just a suburb right here in Washington DC. Multiple people were arrested.
Yeah, this is Luden County, Virginia. Very wealthy county.
Including one man who was tackled to the ground by deputies and forcefully removed from the room. At one point, the sheriff's department declared the meeting an unlawful assembly. After board members abruptly cut off public comment, they heard just 51 of the 259 people who had signed up wanting to make a public comment. Now, some attendees staying in the room, voiced their opinions resulting in that clash with-
I love this idea that, like, cops are having to tackle, like, rich white folk that are upset because, like, you know, the school is teaching appropriately, like, American history, which automatically means that, like, you know, racism is going to be covered? And it's like, the cops are like, "I don't want to do this to you," but I like imagining that, like, the cop was beating him while going, "Critical race theory is an important thing to understand from a legal perspective, sir. You better step the fuck down." This is Loudoun County! He's just like fucking, he's like beating him with a baton while fucking talking about how like, "We need, we need to do more, we need to do more critical race theory for our next generation to understand exactly how the systemic racism operates in an intergenerational capacity!" Just beating the shit out of them.
With law enforcement. Check it out.
That's right.
All these people were doing here was taking the time to be able to show and share, at least with their own people, why they're here. They have every right to do that and to press their rights and their regrets in terms of what's gone on in this county. You guys are-
Critical race theory is when you don't regret systemic racism, but actually regret kids learning about it.
Actually supporting the suppression of people's rights.
John, are you refusing to leave at this time?
Yes, I'm refusing!
Deputies, please-
I mean, that guy sounds like he's from the Midwest. He sounds like Michael Pillow.
Please, arrest this individual for trespassing.
Based on what transaction? What did I do wrong?
Alright, that's just the latest instance of-
Dude, cops love exercising force, dude. Like, cops love exercising use of force. They just, like, he, they get so horny to, like, arrest people. It's so funny to me. Like, he's just like, he's just like, "Hell yeah. Like, this is my time. Fuck yeah, baby." They, they really do love this shit.
Parental pushback in Loudoun County, here in Virginia. That school district making headlines over suspending an elementary PE teacher who spoke in his personal capacity at one of those meetings, saying it would violate his religious convictions to refer to young students by a gender that differs from their gender assigned at birth. A judge has since tossed that suspension. That case is now on appeal. It's not simmering down out there. We'll continue to follow it.
Hey, Sean Hannity here. Hey-
That was bullshit. That was fucking... I live in Nova. Loudoun County is racist. Stay away from that county. So... I mean, this story is hilarious, dude. It's great. It's great. It's like, it's literal panic that Fox News created almost single-handedly. And now they're just sitting back and covering the outcome of said panic that they created. Like, I saw a statistic, and these things are, like, not the greatest, uh, metrics, but I remember seeing a statistic about, like, the mention of critical race theory in media, specifically in Fox News. And like... It's been like 2,300 ti- oh, yeah, okay. Fox News mentioned critical race theory nearly 1,300 times since March, according to a watchdog study. And literally before that, it's a Media Matters one. And before that, it's like nonexistent, dude. Like, March is when they're like, "It's time to talk about critical race theory." And then it's just like, everything is critical race theory now. And it's so great. It's a wonderful business model. And they consciously do this, and they literally will turn around and consistently hire GOP operatives as, like, concerned parents. It's kind of cool watching it happen. Like, it's kind of cool watching the propaganda machine, uh, churn this shit out. Right? Because, like, you get to see it happen in real time, which in the past, you might not have been aware of. You know what I mean? Like, you probably, if you hadn't, if you hadn't stumbled upon this broadcast, you probably would see these sorts of fucking trends, and you'd be like, "Yeah, this critical race theory thing, like, I need to have an opinion on this." But now you get to actually see it. And I showed you who the, where the inception of this came from too, which is the Manhattan Institute. They've done this with War on Christmas. They've done this with, uh, you know, trans student athletes. They did this with trans bathrooms too. They did this with the gay panic. They did this with the satanic panic. Like, this is a consistent ploy by conservative think tanks to find a new thing to operate as like a cultural magnet within the political universe so that they can, so that they can basically, uh, gear up their supporters and pump them full of anger, and it's completely made up. It's just another way to continue the culture war grift. It's another way to continue the culture war grift that reinforces these hogs and their hog-like points of view. And it's always going to continue. I mean, they, they had the Red Scare and communism, and finding communist infiltrators was like the original, you know, cultural Marxist attacks. It's basically, uh, an endless feedback loop, as Chatter also pointed out, to consistently reinforce conservative values within the base after reframing the same old tired fucking arguments with a new patina, with a new format. Critical race theory is a, a, like, legal scholar approach to examining race beyond the way that, like, liberals understand it within our legal justice system and law. It has nothing to do with whatever the fuck these, like, angry parents are upset about. But now it's in every part of our lives. And it's basically just, like, it's, it's because these parents aren't, like, upset about, uh, not having a materialist understanding of our history is going to be a flaw, brother. Like, you know, um, specifically hyper focusing on the racial dynamic and making, uh, you know, slavery out to be the original sin in biblical terms is, is unironically counterproductive to dialectical materialist roots, brother. Like, that's not the case. They're, they're upset because they think, like, CRT, that sounds a lot like, uh, you know, Antifa Factory. They want to make our children gay, and they want to make white people hate themselves, brother. If white people hear about racism, they'll hate it. That's the real reason why people are fucking upset. And they're not actually upset about, like, they're not upset about it from the academic point of view. They're upset because they think critical race theory is, is, again, uh, just everything and anything that mentions racism. So just remember that. Just remember that when you see what people are fucking upset about. And, uh, it's all fucking made up. It's all made up. And they have their own little media ecosystem where they elevate GOP operatives as, like, concerned parents. They've set up astroturf groups, uh, backed by rich fucking benefactors who then turn around and, like, personally create a group and personally create a movement. And Fox News is leading the helm, leading the charge. So, let's take a look at, uh-
Uh, meanwhile-
The explosive school board meeting erupting over critical race theory. Let's, let's take a look at what they did and how they're covering their own work, by the way. This is like... This is wild. It's like me reacting to a video of myself, okay? Sitting there and being like, "Wow, it's crazy that I did that." I mean, you did that, dude. This is you. You did this.
Voters out in Loudoun County, Virginia, and if they were given the chance, they would vote most of the people in the, uh, school district, school board, uh, leaders, out of office if they had their way. Last night, they had another one of the meetings, and it was chaotic. A couple of people wound up getting arrested, and a couple of people had to be tended to because, for medical reasons as well. A lot of the people were objecting to policy 840, which is a transgender policy, uh, over which bathroom they, people would use or preferred names and stuff like that. Um, there was so much going on. There were 300 people in attendance. 259 of them asked if I can get up and speak. And they, after a couple of dozen, they said, "Okay, we're done," and they left.
Well, yesterday, we reported on the Democrats in that area. They put out a tweet, and it said, "Jump on our bus. We have three different bus stops. You can pay a little fi- a little fee, and we will pick you up to take you to this meeting." So not everyone from there is from Loudoun County. There might have been some Fairfax County people, which is a county next door. But they're, everyone there is either pro CRT or against CRT. They did have a chance to talk. One mom, I heard, she said she's gonna pull her child out of the school now.
Yeah, here's how it sounded.
Resign! Resign, coward!
The Western culture and values that brought forth Christianity in the founding documents are being called evil and racist.
I'm reminded of the tyranny of Communist China, where your money is legally stolen and then used in government schools, not public schools. These are not public schools. These are government schools, like here, to indoctrinate children against their parents.
My child is-
I love that, dude. I love that. Why are my taxes paying for my child to learn about American history, brother? What the fuck? It's bullshit. Wait, I gotta run that back, actually. I wanna, I wanna see the first one.
... brought forth Christianity in the founding documents are being called evil and racist.
That guy, he's a fucking Nazi, dude. I, I, I'm sorry. Doesn't pass the smell test. Straight up. Get mad at me all you want. This motherfucker looks straight up like a young Nazi, okay? Like, I see that guy in a crowd, I'm like, "Nope, nope. That's a fucking massive vibe check failure, dude. Vibe checked, denied, okay?" He's like, he, he's so soy. It's just like, literally just perfect. Like, who, who is this person's child, by the way? You're a child, motherfucker. Why are you there talking? If I were to look up this dude's background, I'd find out that he's like a part of a, he's an operative in the Republican Party. And like, he's just there to be like, "I'm a concerned parent." Like, "Oh, really? Where's your child? You're like, literally..." First of all, you look like a young conservative, which means you've never fucked, okay? Like, straight up, let's be real. You're, you're like, basically 25, 26 years old. Your hairline says older, but you can tell. All right? No shot that this person has ever had sex. It just doesn't happen. It's not happening. Yeah, I went there. Young conservatives, they, they've never fucked.
... documents are being called evil and racist.
I'm reminded of the tyranny of Communist China, where your money is legally stolen and then used in government schools, not public schools. These are not public schools. These are government schools.
Uh, for the record, he's describing taxation. Like, this person currently is describing taxation as a concept exclusive to China, which is very cool. Like, taxing does not occur in the United States of America. This is a foreign concept, just like public schools are very different than government schools. China invented taxes to do schooling by the government, which is very different than what we have here. Okay, let's keep going.
... like here, to indoctrinate children against their parents.
My child-
Wait, so he thinks that the Chinese government is like, making their, their fucking next generation woke or something? The irony is like, they would love, they would love for America to have, like, a Chinese government-style operation. Like, these motherfuckers would literally love if they could instill the same sense of patriotism and national cohesion that China desperately works to cultivate, okay? And with, uh, in, in some respects, like, they don't even need to try super hard. Like, they would love that. They would love if America could have, could whip up its own national identity in a similar capacity, in a very conservative and Christian and religious capacity, to like what China does for the national cohesion in China, which is different than, obviously, like, white supremacist American-centric values. But they would love that, dude. That's crazy to me that he's like, as a matter of fact, what they're doing here is kind of that. Like, they're upset that children are learning about, uh, critical race theory, what they perceive to be critical race theory, which is just like, children learning about systemic racism. And that's precisely what they're upset about. They want to censor education. They want to change education in this country. And that's what they're advocating for, and they want the government to do it. So this notion that, like, this notion that, like, "Oh, man, I fucking hate, I hate that, you know, this is happening in China." It's like, "I wish we could do it here in America." But like, you know, for American shit, not like Chinese shit, whatever the fuck they're doing out there.
Is not addressed, and don't assume that. As long as you-
Attacking people with their, with accents and their appearance is not helping, dude. Don't be lazy, brother. One, I'm an incredibly lazy person. And two, it's called entertainment, okay? Clearly, some people enjoy it. If you don't, it's not for you. You can fuck the fuck off, okay? How about that?
You Marxists, push your unconstitutional agenda on my child. She will not be returning back to Loudoun County schools.
Unbelievable.
That's the lady I was talking about.
As the parent-
Yeah, I wonder why she specifically pointed out that lady. Literally the only black person in that entire crowd in Loudoun, Loudoun, whatever the fuck you call it. I don't give a shit about Virginia, okay? Uh, in, in the entire county, and they're like, "I wonder why she was really into that lady specifically. That was the lady I was talking about. She was one of the good ones."
Parents were cut off from speaking at the meeting. A bunch of them remained in the room, and they decided that they would read their prepared remarks to each other. Uh, but at one point, deputies told people, "You gotta leave, or you're gonna be arrested for trespassing if they refuse to follow their orders to vacate." That was the only way they could get people out of the meeting because the meeting room, after the meeting, had adjourned because people are so fired up over both sides on these issues.
So I don't know, nothing, I don't know if, uh, if anything has changed yet, and that's the frustration. Uh, Joe Mobley, Paul Chen, Rachel Pisani, uh, parents had joined us, uh, parents from last night, got up early this morning and joined us to tell us their perspective on where they go from here.
We are trying to recall the-
Paul Chen. Let's take a look. So these guys are close to DC, right? So like, a lot of them are gonna be po- political operatives, okay? Let's see. Let's take a look. Hmm, uh, what is this? What is this? What is this? Party officials on London GOP. See if we can find Paul here. Whaaat? No way, dude. He's a, he's a part of the Loudoun County Republican Committee. What? No way, dude. That's crazy. That's crazy. That's just crazy. He's just, dude, that's, that's wild, dude. He's just like... What? No, he's just a concerned parent, dude. What, you think, you think a guy who's a, a, a part of a Republican committee can't be just a average parent, dude? What, what are you, crazy? He's just a, he's just a concerned parent, dude. This is not like these, these fucking Big Pharma execs that also happen to, uh, work within the Republican Party. Like, they, they can't, they, they're just honestly just, uh, upset. That's why they're here. That's why they're on Fox News.
School board, uh, six members out of eight or nine members are, we're trying to recall because if we don't, uh, this, these radical policies will not change.
Last night proved that this school board, and in particular, Brent-
It could be a different... Joe Mobley. Okay, 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 okay. He's a Big Pharma lobbyist. Paul Chen is a Big Pharma lobbyist, okay? And, uh, a, a part of the Loudoun County Republican Committee. Joe Mobley, another concerned parent. Let's take a look at what Joe Mobley's background is. I, I would love to fucking find out what he does for a living. Oh, he's a conservative broadcaster. What? No way. That's crazy, dude. That's crazy that, uh, he's an up-and-coming young grifter with a, oh, dude, that's wild. Conservative radio host. Concerned parent and conservative radio host, boys.
Have a real problem with the First Amendment, all the way from religious expression, freedom of conscience, to freedom of speech.
We do not want to co-parent with our government. We want to be able-
Wait, this one looks familiar. Let's take a look at Rachel Pisani. Let's see. Let's see what she's doing. Uh, she's just a marketing strategist. Uh, she's not... I don't, I think she might be like, actually fucking just, just a Republican chud concerned parent. I can't find too much honor beyond that. Rachel Pisani is a boutique marketing agency based in the DC metro area. Speakers, authors, life church, oh, life coaches, churches, nonprofit organizations. Services we offer integrated strategy, social media branding, web design, website and database management. Yeah, it's just like strategist, marketing strategist.
... able to instill beliefs and instill our faith in our children without hesitation. So they can mute our mics, they can arrest us, they can kick us off of public property. We're not gonna stop.
She even went on to say that the teachers were told, "If they don't adopt the critical race theory teachings and teach that to the kids next fall," should, they were told they'll be fired. They could be fired, right?
Yeah, yeah. And they said, "All would not have happened had we not had a pandemic." And all these parents were looking over the shoulders of their kids or overhearing the Zoom calls and saying, "What the heck is going on here?" And that's what I, I find-
Wait. Rachel Pisani is recognized as a branding strategy leader. She has been a regular guest on Fox News and NBC and has testified before the Senate Finance Committee regarding the proposed addendum she wrote on Senate Bill 574. You know, a chatter pointed out and said that, uh, these people want to act like they are, uh, they are being treated like black people, uh, were treated in the civil rights movement, except these people were around during the civil rights movement, okay? They were. They were just on the other fucking side. People exactly with the same operating principles were literally still picketing outside of schools, saying, "We don't want you teaching that communist nonsense in our fucking schools," even back then. Especially back then. I mean, there are, I think, a respectable lawyer found some funny, uh, photos. I'll just show you right here. Like, here, here you go, dude. I mean, same fucking energy, like, same energy. This is from that, this is from that rally, right? "We are the parents. Stand up. Stop teaching critical racist theory." Got him. Pretty good. "We oppose race mixing in schools. Force integration creates racial hatred. We favor upholding the day law. We oppose surrendering states' rights to communist-based court opinion." I mean, the motherfucker looks the same, dude. Maybe it's the same guy, actually. Probably not. He'd be way older, but... It's like, it's so funny, dude. They're making the same fucking face too. Like, so yeah, they, they know a thing or two about how black people are treated in the civil rights movement because, you know, they're just carrying on the tradition of , uh, those who continued the oppression and tried to continue the oppression. Now, the irony, of course, is that, uh, if they maybe got a little bit of critical race theory, at least their children would get a better perspective on, uh, the legacy of slavery and segregation that permeates through all of our institutions. You know what I'm saying? Like, maybe then they would know.
Alls they keep doing is changing the narrative. Critical race theory is culturally responsive framework, culturally responsive teaching. It's all just Trojan horses. Inequity and diversity and inclusion, uh, you know, come on. You know, one thing after another, after another-
Come on. Wait, wait, we gotta stop somewhere. Come on. Inequity, diversity, inclusion, all of these horrible values. I hate it. I hate it, brother. These are things we need to stop. Come on. Stop with this. Same thing with the pandemic. Social distancing is communism. Race mixing is communism. Everything is communism. Everything is critical race theory. Everything is communism. Words don't have to mean anything, boys. That's the point. If they did mean something, then, then you would have to actually have an argument and like, have an honest conversation around these subjects. Like, they don't have to mean shit. They can mean whatever you want them to mean. Dude, these guys are such losers, dude. Oh my God. Getting together and like, fucking... Oh, God. Dude, this is so weird. Like, why the fuck do you do this? Like, you get, you go outside? You, you... You go out to like a school board meeting and you fucking sing the Star Spangled Banner? Like... That's so weird, man. That's so fucking weird. "Stam, not CRT!" Song name? Been looking for this, please. Man, fuck that, dude. That shit don't even slap. It's terrible. This lady literally harassed the school board at the meetings about CRT? "This is what happens when you take a stand against the radical left. Video one, this absolutely terrifying. Just last week, this young man's mother attempted to attack me. Now him and his father came at me. Had the deputy not inter- uh, intervened, who knows what they would have done?"
Tell us that they've experienced racism in Carmel schools, and here we are.
Dude, sit down. What's wrong with you?
Sit down!
You're not normal.
Sit down!
You're not normal. I see what CRT does to you. Please go-
CRT did this to you! Yo, young zoomers got some drip, by the way. That's a nice little tie-dye pattern. I like it.
Sit down, young man. Young man, please go sit down.
Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down!
Go sit down, young man.
CRT turned you into this tro- what the fuck happened to you then, you psycho?
You're making me scared.
I want you to stop filming my dad.
Excuse me, it's a public forum.
I want this man to stop filming him.
It's a public forum.
I don't know where he's gonna post it, so I want us to stop filming right now. I don't know where he's gonna post it, so I want us to stop filming right now.
Oh my god, he's like making fun of the kid like worrying uh about like uh trying to fucking save their uh parent from harassment potentially.
It's okay, it's okay, it'll be okay. Does anybody have a tissue?
Dude, this is so funny. Yo, yo, I swear to god dude. Dude, I, I think we need to oppress uh rich white folk living in the suburbs a little bit. Like, they need like a little bit of bullying and a little bit of oppression. Like, they're so bored. They need something in their lives, dude. I'm serious. Like, you don't do this when you're, you don't do this when you're like literally suffering and you have like medical fucking bills to pay and all this other shit. Like, you do this when you're bored, okay? Just like a little bit of government mandated oppression so that they can like actually cry about something that's legitimate for once. It could be healthy, I'm just saying. Had the deputy not stepped in, this is like the personification of a liberal soy father. What the fuck was he going to do to you? Like, are you crazy? What do you think this guy was gonna do? Like, he's got his fucking iPhone charger, he's got his anchor iPhone charger and his fucking uh uh just bursting out of the seams of his uh jeans that he tucked in, that he tucked his t-shirt into. Like, what's this guy gonna do? He was gonna say CRT related things. We needed to stop him. Get back! I don't wanna hear your liberal propaganda!
Liberals are insane!
Of course, soy, soy father is not the weakest person in the room cuz the weakest person in the room is the person who's afraid of soy father.
Go sit down, young man. It'll be okay.
Back the blue, back the blue!
Can you go sit down, young man? It'll be okay. It'll be okay. My god.
Back the blue. Beat his ass! Beat that kid's ass! Why the fuck do we pay you? They're threatening me with their existence! Fucking Twitter videos oppressing me, brother. What the fuck?
Minors, come up here and speak to us about their experience. And you know what happened when they went home? Some of the people sitting right over here jumped on the internet and posted their pictures and their names and links to their social media and invited people all over the country to.
By the way, he's describing why his, his son was like, you know, doing, like blocking the footage. Because like conservatives literally will just go to the extent of like, oh, you're fucking, you're gonna talk about critical race theory at this parent teachers conference? Yeah, I'm gonna fucking, I'm gonna dox you. Like, I'm gonna send your information to every fucking right wing militia out there.
Can we see their pictures? I want proof, proof, proof.
And you should be ashamed of yourself.
Excuse me?
They're clapping. Stop your clapping for him! It's the critical race theory. That's the reason why they're clapping for him. This man accused me of vile things. He became enraged when asked for proof. The man grabbed my arm, leaving it red and swollen. Somehow police removed me from the room and did not remove the young man or his father who harassed me. Oh my god dude, this is so funny. Critical race theory, make these cops. Critical race theory, stop me from interrupting this meeting! Dude, this is awesome dude. This is actually fucking hilarious dude. Name literally one time a conservative doxed someone? You know I'm a fucking left uh like, you know I'm a leftist content creator, right? Are you fucking brain dead? And it's not just me that's been doxed a million times. There's motherfuckers in the chat right now that uh that could tell you that they've been previously sub for ten months is bait. Oh, good one.
You can't handle it, so you gotta cry!
Yeah, I wonder why they fucking, I wonder why they kicked her out dude? I guess maybe cuz she forgot that it's top of the hour and it's time for a sixty second ad break or something. And I just like to say that and sit back and watch the chat lose its fucking collective mind dude. Top of the hour, every hour. It's time for the first ad break of the day, boys. I do find pleasure in this. I, I really do. This really just, it gives me so much joy. And uh if you'd like to no longer see the ads, if you wanna add free broadcasting experience, then all you need to do is subscribe. You can subscribe for five dollars or you can subscribe for free with a Twitch Prime, that is. Okay, your Amazon Primes are just free, waiting for you to be used on a channel. Or you can use an ad block or a VPN. Here's the ad break now.
Hey, get me that, they're telling me I have to go.
You have to go?
Yeah, yeah, board, where's your voice today?
Yeah, I wonder what, like, why, dude, dude, having, imagine having this this little self-awareness that you post this video where you, one, try to make it seem like you're threatened by the existence of a child, okay? And then disrupt like a, like a parent teachers conference or like a school board meeting. And then get upset that they're like escorting you out gently and kindly. Also lie about being grabbed by the way, which is pretty funny too. Like this entire video serves the exact opposite purpose of the narrative that you are trying to cultivate. What part of this video was going to make you look like a hero? Is it the part where your husband made fun of a fucking kid who was like legitimately worried? Stood in front of the camera because he doesn't want his dad being doxed and filmed? And harassed endlessly?
Tatiana did nothing wrong. These people over here tell us that they are Christians, they tell us they're religious people. I just wanna finish one thought. By their works shall you know them. By what you just saw, you see.
Is it doxing a Phil's own in a public hearing? No, that's not the doxing. But the reason why the kid was standing in the fucking uh in, in, in front of the video was so that like she couldn't get a fucking clear footage of the dude, so that she could upload it onto her fucking conservative networks and then have people fucking retweet it and then have people fucking go after him. And uh and, and you know, agitate and aggressively fucking harass these uh families. Now, this happens all the time. It's just like the Karen method of fighting back against it, I guess. It happens to racist people all the time when people are caught doing racist shit. The difference there of course is that like this dude is not doing anything bad or wrong. It's just the people are horny to get mad at someone being like uh you know, uh the kids should learn about critical race theory or whatever the fuck. Not even critical race theory, but just like kids should learn about America's like racial history. And he already mentioned that they did this to students, like they literally did this to students at another meeting and the students are being harassed. Like, the intent of why they're filming that is so that people can fucking upload, so that people can look behind, look into their background. Oh god. New York mom Tatiana Abraham talks to Greg Kelly about her motivation to voice opposition to critical race theory at her daughter's school district.
I'm well, thank you Greg, how are you?
Terrific. Uh what has the reaction been like so far?
Gone a lot of support, a lot of parents coming out, all different parts of the US, a lot of support from my community, moms coming out of everywhere, children, dads. Lot of support.
You know, there was something about it, um I, I found myself becoming almost emotional at the end and I know a lot of other people feel the same way. Can you tell us a little bit, first about your daughter, you ref-
Abolish Long Island, I think. Good way to stop this altogether. Ship it off into the sea. Put all the conservatives there, take all the liberals out and then ship it off into the sea. I don't even wanna watch the rest of this, this fucking clout goblin dude. Jesus Christ. I, I just, I don't wanna give her the fucking the pleasure. Okay, so.
Find uh laughable and people should push back on this when they say this is a Republican, uh uh these are, this is a Republican culture war that they're pushing in order to be successful in 2022. These people have not been contacted by any politician.
Yeah dude, they just happen to be random people that we found that are like literally in like uh you know the Republican steering committee chair. Like, you know what I mean? It's just like, we, they weren't contacted by politicians. Half of those motherfuckers are like lobbyists themselves, dog. What the fuck?
They listen to their kids. No one even talked about party. This is about country and education and indoctrination.
Scary that teachers were teaching things that we didn't agree with as parents and we didn't know about it until the pandemic. And when you see that video, it looks like a, is it the school board facility or is it, it looks like a church, it looked like pews. It's full, packed because parents care so much about their kids, kids don't have a voice and these parents say they're the union for their children.
I wanna Brian Kilmeade. I mean, when they say it's indoctrination, they mean like it's not the right kind of indoctrination, the kind of indoctrination that I would like to see, okay? Anyways, so, so these are all like efforts to try to, these are all efforts to try to like, you know, change uh the education, which has already been changed in America time and time again. Daughters of the Confederacy have done a very uh uh Daughters of the Confederacy literally actively works to whitewash the uh horrible history of the Confederacy. And they've successfully done so. This is one example of how people learn about the Civil War in Louisiana, in a fucking Louisiana uh eighth grade textbook. Okay? I'm not gonna go through this Chapo Red parts of this, but it's so fucking psychotic. Like, here, I'll give you some of the, some of the best parts of it, okay? "With more than a thousand acres and a hundred and fifty slaves, the family's future seemed secure. However, in 1861, after Louisiana's secession from the United States in January and the beginning of the Civil War in April, the lives of everyone on the stone plantation changed." Secession is the withdrawal of a state from the Union. Kate kept a diary and wrote about the many changes in their lives. And this is how they cover the fucking Civil War. Eventually, all five of Kate's brothers served in the war on the Confederate side. In 1861, Kate wrote that the oldest was "wild to be off to Virginia cuz he feared that the fighting would be over before he can get there." However, as the war dragged on, worry about her brothers became a constant theme in her diary. Sadly, by the end of 1863, two of her brothers had died while serving the Confederate Army, one from pneumonia, the other from an accident. In her diary, Kate expressed her firm Confederate patriotism, insisting "our cause is just and must prevail." But even for a patriot, the war's hardships became difficult to take. Union forces arrived on the family's plantation in 1862. With them came a justified fear that the slaves would abandon the plantation for freedom they believed the Union would, our army would provide. Hey, they're just patriots and uh unironically, this fucking, this textbook is like, like imagine being a black kid in eighth grade in Louisiana and like your fucking textbook is just like your literal property. Like, the textbook is looking at this straight up in the framework of like, black people are property and it's wild that they thought that they were gonna get freedom from the Union uh Army. Like, the fear is exclusively centered around the fear that the white slave owning class in Louisiana felt. And not necessarily the fucking everyday fear and cruelty that black people were subjected to. In an attempt to limit her losses in a property loss, Amanda Stone sent a hundred and twenty of her slaves to Texas in 1863. She and Kate were forced to follow the slaves to Texas later that same year. I mean, here's, here's what you could have done. Um not sent your fucking slaves to Texas and instead freed them. Man, oh man, what a fucking gruesome journey. Forced to follow your humans that you own to Texas. Because you didn't wanna give them up. "In the family's absence, the few remaining slaves took over the plantation and moved into the family home, dividing the rooms and the stones remain in personal property among themselves. The stone women would remain refugees." People who were forced to leave their home country. This is a textbook. Until the end of the war in 1865. Not a single mention of like black people, their point of view, how black people feel about being enslaved, being sent to fucking Texas to continue being enslaved for more years in the aftermath of slavery being officially abolished. It gets worse. They were able to reclaim their plantation, but due to emancipation, the freeing of slaves, they lost all their property and slaves. Like, up to this point, black people exclusively have been only regarded as property, okay? "The family had to face the new reality of planting and harvesting their fields with freed people who Kate regretted. Now demanded high wages, AKA wages, just wages in comparison to what it was previously, which was lashes, okay? Heartbreaking that they, that the, the newly freed slaves would demand high wages. How will we go on? Kate felt ambivalent about the end of slavery, but after the war, she did her best to adjust to a world that she felt had been turned upside down. She married, raised children and devoted herself to memorializing the service of Confederate soldiers like her brothers. She founded the Madison Parish chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy and remained active until her death in 1907. In this chapter, we will examine the political and cultural issues that led to sectional tensions and ultimately led Louisiana to secede from the Union. We will also learn about the wartime experiences of soldiers, politicians, civilians and slaves." Wow, okay. We'll see. "In Union occupied areas of Louisiana and in the parts of the state that remained in Confederate hands throughout the war, finally, we will examine the immediate consequences of the war's end." Reconstruction on Chapter 11. I don't even want to get into this, but this is not satire, like this is, now, you mean to tell me that this isn't literal fucking indoctrination and whitewashing of history? And like, any attempt to at least like instill some kind of like correct analysis on history or at least like even cover the other side's perspective? On history, on such a fucking issue that is like across the board regarded as like horrifying? And awful? You mean to tell me that like that is something that we gotta stop immediately? That's what, that's what we gotta fucking get mad at? Nichols was a member of the Democratic Party which competed with the Republican Party for political control of the state. At the time, the Democratic Party was the Conservative Party, the party of the Confederacy and that, with respect to that, so they're right to cover it like that. That's normal. That's like proper, uh, history. I don't have a problem with that. "By the time Nichols was elected to his second term as governor in 1888, Democrats had taken firm control of the state's political system. Southern Democrats who were committed to segregation between the races controlled the state's political system for most of, most of next century." So they're pro Democrat here for the record. "The Life in Annabellum, Louisiana Chapter," it's literally, look at this cool French white guy who lifted his sense of rhythm from slaves playing in the Congo Square. Anyway. So. Oh, two textbooks, two Americas. Race, gender and immigration are some of the subjects that play out differently in classroom textbooks across the country. "A California textbook includes primary source quotations of Black historical figures about white resistance to civil rights during the Reconstruction." I want to see what the Texas one. "A textbook in Texas above says that white Southerners oppose Reconstruction because of tax increases as well as racial resentment." Wait, there's an interactive one? "On this annotated Bill of Rights, a California textbook explains that the rulings of the Second Amendment have allowed for some gun regulations. In the same place, the Texas edition of the textbook contains only a blank white space." What? The Second Amendment right to bear arms? Nothing for the Second Amendment? Brother, you don't need, hey, no, no, you will not infringe on that, okay? You fucking kidding me? "Here's another example. Teenagers in both states will learn about the Harlem Renaissance and debates about the movement's impact on African American life. But Texas students will read some of the critics dismiss the quality of literature produced." "Two states, eight textbooks, two American stories. We analyze some of the most popular social studies textbooks used in California and Texas. Here's how the political device shape and what students learn about the nation's history." "White resistance to Black progress is covered differently in two states. In, uh, California, movement of some white Americans from cities to suburbs was driven by a desire to get away from more culturally diverse neighborhoods. Others believe suburbs offered better and more affordable living. California notes suburban dream of 1950s was inaccessible to many African Americans. Texas does not. Reasons for suburban growth varied. Some people wish to escape the crime and congestion of the city." It's like little ways in which you reinforce the, the same social conditioning that you learnt. "Texas says that white Southerners oppose Reconstruction based on tax increases as well as racial resentment. California instead includes primary source quotations from Black historical figures about white resistance to civil rights. Both states say that the breaches of racial etiquette led to lynchings, etiquette led to, uh, lynchings after Reconstruction, but only California, whose edition was written more recently, makes clear that the perpetrators of the lynchings also hope to discourage Black political and economic power. On gender and sexuality, California textbooks include history that is not in the Texas editions. California states that federal government failed to recognize non-binary, non-binary gender identities and female leaders in its early relations with Native Americans. Texas does not mention that. Makes sense, obviously. California states that enslaved women have faced sexual violence from owners and overseers. California mentions the lavender scare that targeted thousands of gay men and lesbians. California states that Alfred Kinsey's research in early sex reassignment surgeries challenged the post-war ideals on gender." So this stuff is literally what people want to take out, what Republicans want to take out of the books? When they say like CRT, we need to stop it, like, that's what they are trying to get out of the textbooks. "Both states focus on women's fight against discrimination in the workplace. Only California says birth control played a role by allowing women to exert greater control over this, uh, sexuality and family planning." "California includes an excerpt from a novel about a Dominican American family. In the same place, Texas highlights the voice of a border patrol agent?" What the fuck? Uh, California tells the story of Wong Kim Ark, whose 1898 Supreme Court case established birthright citizenship for the children of immigrants. Texas edition, which is older, does not mention the case, but does cover the Chinese Exclusion Act. At least they did that. "California is critical of wealth inequality and the impact of companies like Standard Oil on the environment. Texas is more likely to celebrate free enterprise than entrepreneurs like Carnegie." "Older Texas edition highlights the Republican critiques of President Barack Obama's environmental policies while the California book discusses the threat of rising sea levels." We talk about climate change, but only from the framework of, uh, how climate change policies destroyed free enterprise, brother. So remember like what these people are fucking getting mad at, okay, when they do this? They're getting mad at, uh, basically, uh, the mention of like California textbooks, which are brief, by the way. I wouldn't even go so far as say that the California textbooks are like genuinely accommodating or provide like accurate analysis of everything else. So that's why I get, that's why I, uh, I try to tell you like, you know, be understanding of people all the time. Be understanding of people. This is like, if this is all they know, how the fuck are they supposed to learn if they've like never been around uh, any sort of diversity whatsoever and all of that has been demonized throughout their entire lives? So, that's not all, though. As far as our latest, uh, uh, part of the journey, uh, talking about conservative censorship. "State university faculty students are going to be surveyed on beliefs, uh, according to Governor Rand DeSantis's, uh, new suggestion. Uh, there will be budget cuts that could happen if universities and colleges are found to be indoctrinating students." "Dallasian has continued push against the indoctrination of students. Governor Rand DeSantis on Tuesday signed legislation that will require public universities and colleges to survey students, faculty and staff about their beliefs and viewpoints to support intellectual diversity. Survey will discern the extent to which competing ideas and perspectives are represented in public universities and colleges and seeks to find whether students, faculty and staff feel free to express their belief and viewpoints on campus and the classroom." Remember, this was a big culture, uh, war, uh, talking point, that there is no intellectual diversity, that we can't have Nazis that like, uh, uh, students on campuses like get upset when Nazis like Milo Yiannopoulos come in? And like literally dox trans students and shit like that? So, and make the campus a less safe space, uh, that is not good for learning for a lot of marginalized students.
Democrats-
Um, and remember, this is what they were upset about. They fucking got so mad. That was like the big culture war, uh, talking point. When in fact, the overwhelming majority of college students were more open-minded to a free speech environment, okay? They were way more open-minded to a free speech environment than the older generations were at the time. Empirical evidence showed that like, this wasn't an issue, like people weren't saying that they don't want free speech in college campuses. But we of course still hyper focused on a couple fucking random issues. Open-minded sure thing, buddy? Dude, you have never left your apartment or your fucking mother's basement, let alone go to a college. So I don't care about your fucking dumbass like, open-minded sure buddy take. Do you care about actual studies conducted on the matter? Or do you just want to fucking sit there because you watched a lot of YouTube videos from your favorite broadcasters that told you that it was a certain way, okay? Uh, I've done numerous videos on the subject, so I'll just like try to find a, a quick study, really, uh, just and, and shove it down the throats of these fucking idiotic, uh, dumbasses? Okay? Yeah, here. "According to a 2016 Knight Foundation survey, 78% of college students reported they favor an open learning environment that includes offensive views. Whereas, according to that same survey conducted, U.S. adult population as a whole lags behind with only 66% of adults favoring uninhibited discourse." It was literally fucking dumbass adults that, it was dumbass adults that actually had, uh, uh, this, this notion and, uh, were, were agitated one way or the other. And this isn't the only study conducted on this matter. There were study after study after study conducted on this. There was a Gallup one too. Okay, guys? So shut the fuck up. And the only reason why you know about this is because your favorite dumbass reactionary broadcaster was doing the exact same thing that Fox News does to those boomers that you now laugh at. So be a little bit more open-minded, you fucking idiot, especially if you found yourself here. Especially if you found yourself here, then clearly, even if you're here to fucking hate on me or whatever, you have to remember that like, uh, a lot of this stuff is just pure, purely manufactured. Purely manufactured.